You good?
Yep, we are good.
Council agenda, township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, regular township council meeting of October 30th, 2018.
Posting of notice, inadequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing this notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building and on the municipal website on December 20th, 2017, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 27th, 2017, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers on December 20th, 2017. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipony.net.
Please rise for flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Present.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Carriffy.
Here.
Also in attendance are business administrator Keith Kazmark, the incoming, we have outgoing BA Alan Sandman, CFO Ann Cucci, township attorney Jim Lott, and the township clerk Colette Madden, council president, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, November 8th, 2018, 7:30 PM agenda meeting, which is a Thursday, and November 20th, 2018, at 7:30 PM, regular meeting. Approval of minutes?
They will be approved at the next meeting. Hasn't been circulated yet.
Okay, presentations.
Council President, if I may.
Yes.
Before we start our meeting, I hope I'm not offending anyone, I didn't speak to our attorney on this, but with the killing of the people in Pittsburgh at the Tree of Life, if we would just take a moment of silence in their memory, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council members? Okay, Mr. Lott, township attorney.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Business administrator, Mr. Kazmark or Ms. Sandman?
Before I present who is out here this evening to make a presentation, I just wanted to go on record, I see there's a lot of police personnel here tonight, and I want to say that when Loretta, who mentioned Pittsburgh, you know, when you think of Las Vegas and Pittsburgh and Florida and even in New Jersey, what happens, you're our blue line that protects us. So, tonight, I'm very honored to be part of, with a full, you know, mayor and council on a, and on agreement on a contract that we worked together, so thank you for your service, and, you know, it is a two-way street, and it was a very give-and-take, back-and-forth negotiations, and I'm pleased to say that, you know, I, we did, we did our best, and I just want to thank you again for your service, because without you folks running in, as they do, the firemen running into the burning building and a police officer going, and the first stop you'd get, and, you know, someone has a gun, and you know what happens. I know you all know, my son is a police officer, and I've been involved with public safety all my career, started in Jersey City, and for the first six years that I worked there, I worked for public safety, and have a great respect, and, and I will say this, though, it's a good contract, and you're a good department, but you can do better, and, and you will do better, because we did good by you, you're going to do good by us. So I say that because, as I've said before, my first grade teacher said to my mother when I went, when she went there to find out how Ellen was doing, she said, "There's always room for improvement." So, God bless us all, and thank you for the job you do, but he'll be watching, I'll be, I'll be looking from Denville, but, you know, and if you do stop me, you know who I still am, but I'm kidding. Anyway, anyway, thank you, I wanted to, on a, on a, on a more joyful note, and if you have to give me two tickets, because I just said that, okay. So, anyway, this evening, I have a group here that are going to speak to you, there's a requirement when, when you seek home investment, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and you seek an application before the county, that they have to present before council. The mayor has signed it, you know, and I will not be giving this out until they get a chance to present, so if you would come up, and, and Mr. McCann, if you would just introduce yourselves, tell who you are and what the object of this application is, you're going to make sure they're, but I will say this, I know that the council did get, I made sure you had pretty much chapter and verse, the documentation on this. But this is a requirement, that they do present the project, and if you want to take it away, Terry.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Terry McKean, I'm the executive director of Abbot Community Services, we're based in Denville, and our mission is to provide residential services to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And one of the ways we do that is to establish group homes throughout Morris County, we currently have 12 group homes, and we're interested in pursuing another development in Precipiny on Circle Drive, it's a vacant piece of land right now, and we're proposing to build a four-bedroom ranch home that's fully accessible, providing services to people who are on the waiting list from the state of New Jersey, to families who have been waiting many years to have their sons and daughters move on and live independently in the community. So this group home is 24-hour supervised, we have staff there around the clock, the individuals all have things to do during the day, Monday through Friday, they either are employed competitively, or they go to day programs, or they go to workshops, that kind of thing. So we have a home application into the, into Morris County, and in order to provide some portion of the funding to build the home, which is also comprised of funds from, a dollar, a dollar-to-dollar match from the money that Precipiny contributes with the New Jersey Home Mortgage Finance Agency in Trenton. So those three pieces of funding, Precipiny, HMFA, and Morris County Community Development Home Funds, would actually completely finance the entire project.
Okay. Do you want to say something, as, as someone who's dedicated to the construction of this and why you got into it, I think it's admirable, if I may say so.
Yes, my name is Luciano Bruni of Nivell, we work with Terry's group in building affordable housing projects, whether, you know, people with special needs or low and moderate income, we do work with groups like Terry, and we do it around New Jersey, we probably have about 15 of these projects going on right now. But I would tell you that we got involved in these projects when there really wasn't much activity back in 2008, it's one of the means of way we had done business, and it was a great opportunity for us to serve a population that really doesn't have a voice or really doesn't have a means of having a real home, as we all do. So, we, we got into it, and we've been doing it ever since that time period, and it's been, been a great way of, you know, providing home for people that are real need.
Because I had asked him, I said, you know, "Why did you stay in it?", he said, "Because it served us when we needed them, and now they need us." So I thought that was admirable, that they, you know, will still be building affordable housing, you know, you know, special needs housing, so, you understand what I'm saying? Yeah, okay, I don't know, okay, so I just wanted, wanted to let you know, so if you have any questions.
I have a question, Terry.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
What are the ages of the clients that will be living at the home?
They're all adults, so because this is a new project, we'll have to see who is next on the waiting list when the project comes to fruition. We usually try to find people that are homogeneous.
Okay.
So, a group home that we just opened recently was for young autistic men, we have people that we take out of nursing homes who are not only intellectually challenged, but also physically challenged, and don't belong in nursing homes, these are people in their 30s and 40s living in nursing homes when they should be out, engaged in the community, you know, that kind of thing. So we're not sure, but more than likely, it will be people who are either medically fragile from nursing homes, or younger men and women on the autism spectrum.
Spectrum. And what is the ratio between your client and the personnel that would be assisting them?
Yeah, it's generally three to one, if they're medically fragile, then it's, it's, you know, pretty much three staff to two people.
Mm-hmm.
And usually, one of those people is an LPN, one of those staff persons is an LPN, because people who are medically fragile and developmentally disabled sometimes have other kinds of chronic illnesses that need nursing 24 hours a day.
Right. I commend you, I commend you both. As you know, Terry, my brother was mentally challenged.
Yes.
And I think it's marvelous work.
Well, thank you.
Good luck to you.
So I would just want to know, do you need anything, anything recorded from the clerk that you did present this evening?
We do, yes.
Okay, yeah, so say what you, require what you.
Oh. We're sharing.
Yeah, so we'll need just, whether it's a proof of minutes that it was discussed at an open meeting, also we'll need a support letter from the mayor and council, and we'll also need a letter that basically says that the disbursement of money that HMFA has of 200, you know, the dollar amount, is dispersed to the project, and it would be funded to the project.
Okay. I believe I have, I can, I can, if I don't want to, is the council in support of me going forward with handing the document that the mayor has signed it? I didn't take, take, if you want to just take that.
He said he needs three things, you said you needed the minutes, a letter from the mayor in support, and what was the third thing that you said?
And the other letter we'll need is a, a letter that states that the dollar amount that is a match to HMFA will be released for the project, so that could be just a letter from the mayor and council, or just the mayor.
So, this the mayor has signed, and as far as the other documentation, we'll make sure you get it tomorrow. I've been working in concert with Mr. Clarken of the mayor's office, and he's advised the mayor, so they may have a letter, I didn't notice that there was a letter here, but it is, the application itself is signed, and I know you want to get it in tomorrow.
Yeah.
But I know we have some time, that the most important thing was that there was a discussion before October 31st.
Correct.
And I think there's a November time, so we have a little time, Colette, to work on getting the documentation that they need.
Yeah, if we can get, that letter can come, like, if I get it by November 7th, that's fine, I'm good.
What's it worth to you?
I have a question for.
Do I have to answer that?
The match for HMFA, is that coming from Township Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Yes, yes, it is.
Correct.
And it was already approved.
All right. So it's part, part of the current spending plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely. I wouldn't be sit, I wouldn't, yeah, thank you for asking, though, but I'm glad I can say yes.
And HMFA has those dollars already.
Yeah, yeah, they have them already, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just that they want to make sure that they go through a process and that we then release them.
Understood.
But they have them already.
Right.
And, and it's for the purpose of what, what they're for.
Correct.
So if you want to just receive this, and then we'll make sure you get everything else. I'll work with Colette and also with Mike Clarken.
Thank you.
Okay.
I also just want to say that I work with a lot of townships on developing group homes. Precipiny is amazing.
You're here.
You guys are so supportive and open-minded, your departments all help us in our job to provide these services, and the group home that we have on Littleton Road, who have very challenging, very, very profoundly disabled people living in them, you know, we had a tough winter last year with, with all the power outages, and these guys have to go to hotels, they can't, because they have power wheelchairs that have to be, you know, routinely charged, a lot of other kinds of things that need to be charged, and we went to Precipiny back again and asked for development funds for a generator, which they, which we did, and it was all installed just this past spring, so we do appreciate that very, very much.
Thank you, it was, it was a pleasure working with you too, Terry.
We're going into this winter season feeling much more secure.
Very good, yeah.
For sure. Thank you.
Luciano's pretty good, but it was because of you that this project, you know, it's all about you, Terry.
And you too, Rob.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doing God's work, good. I think the administrator has a few things that he'd like to report on.
Thank you. Through you, council president, first of all, I want to thank everyone for their support and help over the last five weeks. I'm still here, so that's a positive, I think. We've had some outstanding meetings, I've met with each of the members of the governing body, so I want to thank all five members for taking the time out to meet with me, inform me of what their concerns are, what their priorities are, and what some of their vision is for Precipiny, it was definitely most helpful. We've been through 18 budget meetings, that concluded last week, I want to thank Ann Cucci for her assistance in that process, we will be formulating and finalizing some of the requests from each of the departments in the coming weeks, so that we can maintain a schedule set by statute in 2019 in introducing and adopting the budget during the first half of the year. Next step, just for the council's edification, in the month of November, I'll be setting up one-on-one meetings with each of the department heads to learn more about their personnel needs, their operations, or their departments. I want to thank Colette for taking me around, letting me understand some of the geography here in Precipiny, we've visited almost every municipal facility, with the exception of sewer, which I think was by design. So I want to thank him for his assistance there, and I especially want to thank Ellen for her partnership in this transition, it has been nothing but amazing, so much so that she went on a cruise last week.
I had all the faith in the world.
To just give me a little taste of what it's like to be alone in the administration office, but I want to thank her, and again, I want to thank all the staff members here throughout the township, and also to the residents for their very warm welcome, so thank you again.
I just have to say, because with humor, you can get through anything, and I was out sick after I got off the cruise, I got this horrific cold, like everybody's getting, and so I'm signing vouchers and I'm sending emails on, but Sunday, after I got off the boat, after I got off the plane, I came here and I was sending out emails, so when Stacy brought over the things for me to sign at my home, she said, "You know what Keith said? She's back", because he got a couple of emails from me.
A couple, I don't know.
I know.
I scrolled four times, and all there was was Ellen saying.
That's an understatement.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, township clerk?
Yeah, just a couple things, council president, first, next week, November 6th, there's going to be no council meeting, it's going to be rescheduled to November 8th because we have the election, go out and vote, if you received your sample ballot, your voting location will be on there, if you don't know it or don't have your ballot, you can contact the clerk's office, and we can provide that information for you. Also, this is a general election, so at the end of the day, if you're Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter, you could vote for whoever you want, as opposed to in a primary where you have to vote your party, and that's all I have, council president, thank you.
Thank you. Township offices, committees, reports?
Not at this time.
No? Okay, thank you. Okay, bids taken, October 4th, 2018 Yard Weeds Transportation and Disposal Recycling, October 5th, Craftsman Farms Administration Building Rehabilitation, October 30th, WWTP Generator Improvements to be taken, November 8th, Transportation and Disposal Sewage Sludge Cake, November 20th, Invitation for Bids from New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, License Electric Power Suppliers for Electric Generation Services. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. This time I don't attain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public.
If you are coming up, please state your name and address, sign in, you'll be given five minutes.
Kandolsky, 21 Winfield Drive, I want to thank you very much for putting the resolution on the agenda to support the bill at our legislature in Trenton that will ban single-use plastics. I know that that actually happened because Colette told you to do it, because he said, "I don't want to get any more emails from this guy." So, thank you very much. You know, so I just want to say, and I think you're all aware of the situation with plastics, I understand how some people feel that laws like this are an infringement on their rights and, and their freedoms, and I understand that, and we live in a complex world, it's very heavily populated, without laws, we'd have anarchy, so there's a tension between what laws we need and what laws are, you know, overbearing, but we've clearly reached the point where we cannot continue to use our streams and our oceans as a sewage point, as a sewage drop-off or whatever, for all the plastic that the world is producing. Plastic never degrades, it just gets smaller and smaller, we are now, as a result, eating, drinking, and breathing it, and our children are doing the same, and that will continue until we do something to fix it. So, we cannot keep using our streams and our oceans as a common disposal point, and we have to stop it, and that's what this bill will start, will start us to do. So thank you very much for supporting it.
Nick Komiyak from Lake Hiawatha, I'd like to replicate Mr. Kandolsky's, thanks for putting it on the agenda, and see if you can advocate for the elimination, I want these police officers to hear this, there has to be a lot of drinking and driving going on, because when you're going around cleaning up the streets, that's all you find is them little bottles, and they're really wasteful, they're plastic, and they have that aluminum top on it, so if you, it's a complicated process to, to really separate that in, out of the waste stream, but it encourages littering and drinking and driving, and if there's some kind of way to get an ordinance, or even encourage the state to ban those little liquor bottles, maybe we could do something about that, too. And one interesting thing I found out, plastic bags can actually, through a, a process, be turned into fuel, and even a more efficient fuel than crude oil, so this thing about you're going to put people out of work, a lot of the bags come from China, anyway, and if there was subsidies to these employment places, the whole operation be, can, can be converted into fuel, fuel for, you know, automobile engines, and hopefully someday we'll wise up and, you know, we have to get off of the fossil fuels, too. But the other element would just be the street cleaning, because the more, when people see it and they're used to it, and most of the litter is plastic, but it just encourages people to be, to disrespect themselves and their country and to, and to make things dirtier. So congratulations on the agenda, and hopefully Governor Murphy will, you know, will accomplish this mission, so, thank you very much.
Mary Przycki, Marcella Road in Precipiny, just a follow-up on the plastic, I did a little research about the plastic bags, and if you go up to grassroots up in Denville, you'll find out that they are using a biodegradable plastic bag, it's something new on the market, and if this does come into fruition where they have a ban on plastic bags in grocery stores, plastic bags represent 1%, no, 1/10 of 1% of the plastic that is, that is developed in, in the world, okay? And I understand the need to do something with plastic, that it has to be done, but if you're going to put a, a 10% fee on the plastic bags, and 5 cents goes to the store, and the other 5 cents goes to the state of New Jersey and the general treasury, I think that it needs to be, that 5 cents needs to be dedicated to the, to some kind of development, developmental processes that companies can do, or universities, to find ways to actually let this biodegrade safely, and it can be done, it's just, if you throw it in the treasury, the general treasury, you don't know where it goes, but it should have a purpose, to find solutions to plastic bags, and that's what I think the resolution should really be strong with, and, and it's possible, I have it, I have some information for your people. The other thing I have tonight is, I'd like to understand this affordable housing fund better, especially with the Route 10 pilot thing, it was brought up when we were at one of the council meetings, that you would subsidize apartments to refurbish or, or existing apartment complexes, to encourage them to have affordable housing, and that is, well, they're the subsidy for what you're going to give the apartment owner, how many years' worth of that subsidy do you give them, since the Route 10 project is a 30-year pilot, correct? So what are we going to be obligated to in years for the subsidies that these people are going to get? And the increases of rent, I mean, or are you going to go back to rent control? That sure didn't work in near this town, I think he's probably the only one, myself, who remembers that battle, it, it was, it didn't work, you know that. So that's one of my questions, my other question is, is Waterview, I mean, that thing is a disaster, and I still question where the sidewalks are going to go, okay? And if you look, go past there and watch that wall crack. I mean, I don't know how in the good blazes this town passed the architectural design for that wall, go and look at the crack that developed now, and is it going to go on? And the safety, you put traffic lights there on Waterview Drive to get into that development, yet I live by Cherry Hill Road and Littleton, Cherry Hill Road and Littleton Road, we put up with traffic for years and years and years, and it's getting worse and worse and worse, and yet we can't have a traffic light. So can I have an answer to my question about years of subsidy?
Sure. Typically, the, the period for a project that receives an affordable housing subsidy will be 30 years, sometimes that will depend on the economics of the project.
So we're going to subsidize two for 30 years, the township?
No.
Well, no.
Not really.
The project will be restricted for affordable use for 30 years.
Right, okay.
All right? The amount of money that will be provided for the subsidy will depend on the economics of the project, in other words, what are we subsidizing, is it going to be rehab, or is it going to be rental income?
So you don't.
We don't know that right now.
How do you, how do you determine that, then?
We're going to have to talk to landlords.
We're going to have to talk to landlords.
Correct.
And if the, if the apartments say, "Wow, what a good deal this is, I got guaranteed rent increases", who's the loser there? The taxpayer, I think.
No.
No, I would disagree with that.
No, please explain that, because that is not the case. And Mary, I would love you to come to my office so I can give you more detail on this, but I'd like, Jim, just to finish the thought, because that, this is, this is a win-win for even our credits, so, Jim, if you just.
Explain better than.
Yeah, no, no.
Well, you can, like you said, you can go to Ellen's office and talk, speak with her.
Yeah. It's, it's. Mary, it is a complex subject, it's very difficult to explain from just, just over the, because one question will lead to another, I would be happy to have you come to my office tomorrow or the next day, and go, show you point by point of what we're talking about.
Appreciate that, because when you look at it.
Yeah, no, I know, it takes, yeah, it doesn't.
It don't look right to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, my name is Doris Martin, and I'm here tonight to try to get some answers to an ongoing issue.
Speaking to the mic.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just pull it down.
Better?
Pull it down, there you go.
Better?
Don't be afraid.
I am.
There you go.
I'm trying to get some answers to ongoing issues. In the last minutes that were posted for October 16th, it was an engineering. In the last minutes that were posted for October 16th, it was an engineering report about the water problem on Cherry Lane. They are continuing to monitor. This problem's gone on for almost a year. They're continuing to monitor. I'd like to know in what way that monitoring is being done because nobody's been on my property.
May I, may I answer that only because...
Yeah.
My brother lives on Stafford Road. And my brother's property and several of his neighbors...
Well, that's why we have several neighbors.
Were also impacted. They're monitoring it by going in with, I'll call it a rotor-ruder type piece of equipment. And they're going in the drains and they are breaking up the roots of the trees, which are mostly the problem. And because they have several homes and several streets, my brother was told that it will be monitored over a period of time, several months over a period of time.
But, what are they doing to monitor it? What does that mean?
They're coming and they're checking to make sure that the lines are open, that there's no roots being reformed in the pipe. If there's something with the pipe, then they have to redo the pipe. But, on Stafford Road, that's not the case. There were just numerous roots, and that has been cleaned. And some of the properties have had new drainage grates placed on their property.
Well, the problem that we have is that we say that there's a pipe running between the property lines behind us.
Mm-hmm.
The township doesn't have those pipes on any maps.
Yes. I understand where you're coming from. That was the same incidence with my brother on his property and his neighbors. Because the homes were built many years ago, over 30 some-odd years ago. And unfortunately, there wasn't a designated easement for these properties.
Okay. The situation that I have now is that my new driveway is degraded, so I have a tort claim ready to go in with that. My backyard is now no longer Kentucky bluegrass, but it's swamp grass. My next-door neighbor's property can't even be mowed. Today, I have water coming up through my driveway. Driveways all around me are dry because the sun's on them, not mine.
Well, I think Ellen can...
Mr. DePiero, you're very familiar with this. Do you have any, anything to say?
Yeah. Your husband Roy dragged me through that wet grass...
Right.
Several days ago.
Right.
The storm drain that runs through my backyard, which is behind your backyard...
Right.
They cleared the roots, and it solved the problem in my area.
Correct.
And I thought that would have solved the problem in your area, too, if indeed the drain on my side was causing your problem. Apparently not. Apparently, there's something else.
It's, I believe it's the pipes coming down from Greenbrier where the storm drain is that comes down the slope into your storm drain that the pipes are compromised on the south side, leading to all the water in Claudette's backyard or backyard and across the street. But, my problem is, I'm not seeing any action. We called engineering. They tell us to call roads. I called Mayor Action Center. They said to call engineering. I need to know what steps are being taken. You're continuing to monitor it, and that's great. But, not looking through the pipe that does, the township says doesn't exist, isn't monitoring my problem.
Could you, could you take some pictures of your property and your neighbor's property? That's what the residents on Stafford Road did to show the engineering department...
Engineering department's been out months ago.
We'll contact them.
That's the problem.
We'll get our telephone.
They were out in spring.
Engineering, engineering department has been there. The Department of Public Works has been there. And they're not sure exactly where the problem is. I requested two weeks ago, as you recall, that we get more detail on the engineering reports every month, more detail on these two sites, Stafford and Cherry Lane, because we're not getting enough information. There's not enough being done to solve the problem.
And the thing is, if they monitor it and don't find a problem, okay, then there's no steps. What's the plan that's in place if they monitor it and there is a problem?
Through your council president.
Where we haven't even gotten there yet.
Ma'am, if you, if you stay for the duration of the meeting before we break for the executive session, I'd like to get your contact information.
Okay.
I will come out personally with Mr. Lizza to inspect it so at least I have some visual of what you're contending with out there.
And I work from home every day, so I'm home every day. Nobody's been on the property from engineering in months. I have cameras in my front yard, my backyard, and my side yard. Nobody has been out on my property in months.
Ma'am, Mr. Lizza and I will be there before the end of the week.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
See no one else come forward? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
What are you talking about?
Pat hasn't been here for months.
Really? Don't take my turn. Wait a minute. Jesus, I've been waiting for this.
Okay.
Before my five minutes start, please let me say, anything I say tonight, I have the utmost respect for police officers, okay?
I've got a couple of things tonight, but this is one of the important things. I told you back in May that I had filed an internal...
It's working.
I filed an Internal Affairs complaint regarding four officers who had retired. This is their response to me in regards to going and receiving, and getting property back from these officers, where they specifically state that, you know, you can read the whole letter, but this part that says, "The PTHPD cannot impose discipline on a separated officer for violating department rules and regulations, nor can it formally discipline itself. The PTHPD is conducting a review of the aforementioned policy and procedures in order to identify and correct the problems and procedures." So, my question is, is that this policy and procedure was first written up in 12, December of 14, was the new policy and procedure. It was never one on file before about taking on getting devices back. We have been, for five years now, chasing a police officer who is retired and in good standing. And we have not paid one dime of what we owe that man. Now, to me, how can you say this and be doing that to one of our police, our retired police officers? I'm sorry. I'm ashamed of this town. I really am when it comes to this. This is ridiculous. You have this in writing now that they would never do this to a retiree. I think Mr. Kariffi should start being paid what is due. And I hope all of you will look into this and make a quick decision because this is way too long. Whatever happens, we're going to lose. You know that. We're going to lose something. So, I'm asking you to please get on the ball with this and make it right.
And I'll remind council that we're currently in litigation over some of the issues that were alluded to and that no one on council should make any further comment.
Thank you, Mr. La. Appreciate it. Okay. Now, going on just certain little things. Totally disagree with putting a police officer at the PBA. We had that once before. I don't know who's paying for it. I see you got a resolution in there. But, I agree. We should never have done that. We should not do that. It's not, the township, we don't own it. It's an association by the police department. It's their responsibility to run it, not the taxpayers to pay for this police officer to be there. He should be on the road. Police sergeant and lieutenant staffing. Well, we heard of sergeants last time, but now all of a sudden, lieutenants are in there. Again, Mike brought up a good point. We had a survey done many years ago. We were told we had too many sergeants. We were told we had too many lieutenants. We were told we could do things. We need a review like that again because it's really, I mean, we've got policemen now that are stationed at the schools. Instead of tier three, we have real cops in the schools, which, you know, taxpayers are paying for. It's a lot of money to just be sitting in a school when we have tier three that could take care of it. It's a lot of spending that is just not needed and not necessary. I have, the website, please, somebody talk to the mayor. That website, in all honesty, sucks, okay? It really does. It stinks. You cannot find anything on it.
One minute, Pat.
And I asked, I called the mayor's hotline one day, asked them to call me back because I wanted navigation tool because it just, you know, you don't know how to get through it. Nobody ever called me back. And I told them I was looking for the agenda for that week. Nobody ever called me back. And then at about 3:30, 4 o'clock, I pulled it up again just for the act of it, and there it was. So, nobody called me. Nobody acknowledged it was fixed. Nobody did anything. That action line needs to be changed. And another thing is the salary changes. Every year...
30 seconds.
We have salary changes for blue-collar workers, this, that, and the other thing. I don't understand it. In a normal job, you have your minimum and your maximums. You reach that maximum, okay, then you kind of try to work something out like a bonus or something. But, why are we constantly increasing these salaries? I mean, they're pretty good salaries, a lot of them. And I just don't understand when you have a minimum and a maximum, how come we are constantly, every year, changing them? Sounds like it's being changed for like one person that might have met something and he needed a little money. We can't afford that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. See no one else come forward? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Thank you. Mr. DePiero?
Ordinance 2018:25. Ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, providing for retirement payouts and authorizing a special emergency appropriation of $752,132.19 therefore. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on October 30, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on November 20, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
Motion passes five-nothing.
Ms. McCarthy?
Ordinance 2018:26. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending Chapter IV Administration of Government of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills by revising the table of organization of the Police Department with respect to the number of authorized lieutenant and sergeant's positions. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on the first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on October 30, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on November 20, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
Motion passes five-nothing.
Ms. Peterson?
Ordinance 2018:10. An ordinance establishing salary ranges for police superior officers of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on October 30, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on November 20, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
Motion passes five-nothing.
Ms. Grignani?
Ordinance 2018:11. An ordinance establishing salary ranges for patrolmen of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, PBA. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on October 30, 2018, and that said ordinance shall be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on November 20, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Okay.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
Motion passes five-nothing.
Mr. DePiero?
Ordinance 2018:23. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2015:27, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Hourly Wage Ranges for Blue Collar Employees of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on October 1, 2018. This ordinance was introduced at the September 25, 2018, agenda meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance 2018:23 be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open a public hearing for ordinance 2018:23.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
The floor is open for discussion on this ordinance only.
Batatua 182 Hawkins Avenue. For any of these, just put me down. That's asking, why do we do it every year? Please, somebody give me an answer.
I have a question concerning Pat's concern. How does this affect our tax ratables? So, in other words, like she says, these guys are getting raises every year, so the money's coming from, I guess, the tax base. So, if it was more, if their salaries were more stable over long periods of time and they're, you know, making good livings, wouldn't that give an opportunity for the rest of us to maybe get some kind of a tax reduction? Is that, is that kind of money that, is that feasible or... Is that, is that kind of money that, is that feasible, or is it a waste of tax ratables? And is it really necessary? Because I think Pat really has come in on something.
You may recall that there was some concern a while ago about paying someone beyond the maximum and the minimum, minimum, maximum range. So, at that particular time, I tried to explain that over a period of 30 years, it was historical that you, the council is the, are the people that have the purse strings. So, you go through the budget, and then in May, or June, hopefully early, like May, you put in a minimum and maximum based on what promotions and what the salary minimum is maximum. Now, you try to make the maximum a little higher, so you don't have to do it every year. So, we did a, I mentioned that because of the concern of somebody, there were two people that were hired. One was hired, say, December 19th, and the other one was hired December 7th, or something to that nature. So, there wasn't sufficient time. You need to have the ordinance read two readings within the same calendar year. So, we waited, and we said, instead of doing it in January, because what's gonna happen is, because then we became very sensitive to over, you know, going over the minimum, this is for one person.
Oh.
This is for one person, and you have to put it on this way. And the thing is, we were taken aback because it was done late in the, meaning we, meaning myself and working with someone in my office, and, and then, and the finance officer double-checking to make sure that we, made sure everybody was in the parameters, with a little bit of an extension. Somebody got a raise later in the year, and it threw us off, and we said, we are not gonna have any questions, we're gonna put something on. In fact, we waited, you know, for one person.
So, it's not the rank and file of the whole force.
No, it's one person out of hundreds of people.
You answered the question.
And just, right, and just so we're clear on this, you know, there are a couple of other legal requirements that were required to have with respect to setting a salary ordinances and salary ranges. One is that there's a state statute that requires that public employees' salaries be set by ordinance, and then we also have civil service guidance with respect to what we can pay for those positions. So, we have to adjust periodically as a result of other changes that are made, either by civil service or by other promotional decisions made by township, or in some cases, those salary adjustments that are required by contracts that we enter into with various unions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe I, I'm sorry, I should've said that from the beginning, Pat. I really was just trying to say that.
I still learn.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2018:23.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes five-nothing.
Ordinance 2018:24. An ordinance amending ordinance 2018:16, entitled, An Ordinance Establishing White Collar Salary Ranges for the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, with notice of the ordinance, the notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record and the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills on October 1, 2018. This ordinance was introduced at the September 25, 2018, agenda meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance 2018:24 be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Public hearing 2018:24. Motion to open the public hearing of ordinance 2018:24.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
The floor is open for this matter only, for only this ordinance.
Me and Mary are having a discussion here, and we don't understand it. All right, my question here is, you have your minimum and your maximums, right? You're telling me you're changing this ordinance for one person?
Correct.
Okay, so that means the maximum was met.
Correct.
Okay. My question was, why do we have maximums if we keep putting them up and up and up? In a normal job, you hit a maximum, you then come to a bonus or something other than keep going. I mean, that's my question.
Ms., can I take a shot at this very quickly?
Go ahead.
That's okay. You're correct. Other than what Jim said, that it's set by state statute, you are correct that in corporations, when you reach the maximum, you get bonuses and things like that, but in government, there is no such thing as bonuses. So, what happens is, for example, you have the COLA, the cost of living increase, the adjustment that happens every year, okay? So, if an individual is at, let's say there's a maximum set at $44,000, and they've been here for 20 years, they started at $20,000, they've been getting COLA adjustments, for example, in addition maybe to a merit increase, then you have to kind of change the ordinance to account for those adjustments. So, I hope that kind of is satisfactory, but...
Kind of makes it satisfactory in a sense, but then I get into the cost of living increase that they get every year. Every year.
Well, now you're changing the whole topic.
No, but I'm just saying, this is, what I am, I can pull out money from anywhere, but, you know, from what I'm saying is that
I understand.
makes no sense.
Totally understand.
You know, can I just say one thing? When I answered the first one, they're both about one person.
Yes.
But I was really answering more on the white collar one, which is what we're discussing now. The prior one was a blue collar one, and it was different. There was a gentleman, oh, we can't really get into details, but the job required that he get, it wasn't so much a promotion, we wanted to keep him on the, on the steps going this way. Now, I can, administration can promote, but when I want to move someone from like, say, I think they went from an H4 to an H9, which is a different salary, I meet with the union, and I say, this is in your bailiwick, and we'd like to, because this gentleman was doing, and getting certification in a certain area, we wanted to give him a promotion, not a promotion, we wanted to keep him in where, in the rank he was, but move him up in the steps because of the nature and the, and actually the danger that he was doing. It had something to do with the tree, the tree climbing, which can be very costly if we do it out of, out of, in-house workers. So, in concert with them, we worked out an arrangement that they agreed that, that we, we could give him a, you know, a movement this way. So, that was another one person. But there's a lot of nuances, Pat, that I can understand what you're saying, it's not a full swath. However, I will say on the white collar one, without totally giving up the world here, that was done in prior administration, and it was done late in, in the administration, that this individual got a salary that, an adjustment that I didn't, I wasn't aware of until after it was done, and then we looked at the maximum and said, oh my God, he's over the maximum.
Yeah. Well, that seems to be the problem too, is that when you're hiring people, you're going over the maximum before you even hire them. That was the result of the other two people.